Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, we have six trustees present. Trustee Gallup Moore is supposed to join by Zoom, but hasn't joined us yet, and our student trustee is not here. For items to be taken out of order, we are going to take the 11.4 after 7.6. So it'll come before section eight, 11.4, which is our solar microgrid item. Next, we're going to go to longevity recognition. We only have one person being recognized today for 15 years, Gary James, as an educational program support specialist. So thank you, Gary. Hey, we're going next into closed session. We don't have any public comment, it looks like, on closed session. General public comment will be after. And for closed session, we're going in for conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, one case, and evaluation of superintendent president. And we'll return around 5:00 PM, but not a certain time.
Thank you.
Hey, give me one second. We'll call the meeting back to order at 5:07 PM from closed session and trustee Gullup Moore is now with us on Zoom. And we were in closed session and we have nothing to report. And we'll go next to public comment and we have a couple of the general public comments submitted here today. And so we'll start with Lorraine Brown. Am I reading this wrong? I just can't. Not here? Okay. Next we'll go to Leida Tolentino. And just a reminder, we have five minutes per person.
Good afternoon, members of the board of trustees, colleagues, and all who are present today. I am Dr. Leida Tolentino, a faculty member and chair of the psychology department. The mood in this room today is both celebratory and hopeful. My fellow faculty and I applaud your recent decision to continue funding the faculty professional development coordinator position. Thank you for taking this important step toward ensuring that SBCC's faculty and the broader college community have the resources needed not only to fulfill their responsibilities, but also to grow, innovate, and thrive. At SBCC, faculty PD is not about checking boxes, sitting through dry PowerPoint presentations, or chasing the latest higher ed buzzwords. Our PD is unique. It is transformative. Over the past 12 years as a member of the SBCC community, I have both facilitated and participated in numerous PD initiatives. These include co-founding the Affective Learning Institute (ALI) in 2015, co-facilitating embodied teaching and learning communities of practice, contributing to faculty inquiry groups that later merged with the RISE's First Year and Beyond program, and most recently serving on the Teaching and Learning Committee affectionately known as the TLC. I've grown tremendously through these efforts. More importantly, so have the students we serve and interact with daily. These spaces have encouraged us to reflect on our evolving teaching practices and equipped us to experiment with innovative student-centered approaches. Through numerous initiatives, work groups, committees, and programs, we have relied on the support and inspiration of colleagues cultivating collaboration across disciplines and creating lasting professional and personal connections. Ultimately, these efforts ripple outward, enhancing student engagement and success. As humanist psychologist Abraham Maslow showed, our basic psychological needs, especially the need for connection, must be met before we can pursue higher levels of achievement and of achievement and self-actualization. Students, particularly those historically underserved by our institutions, seek educators who help them feel included, valued, and at home with themselves. This is the quiet power of PD, helping us show up for our students in meaningful and lasting ways while meeting the everyday challenges of a highly demanding profession. And now, in 2025, there may be no greater professional challenge or opportunity than the rapid rise of artificial intelligence. AI is already transforming higher education and its colossal impact is being felt in classrooms around the globe. Faculty across disciplines are grappling with how to respond to this seismic shift. In this moment, Faculty PD is not a luxury. It is a lifeline. This past spring, the TLC launched a new AI work group composed of myself, Justina Buller from history, and Chris Panza from math. We curated a PD series to explore AI's role in teaching and learning, its uses, misuses, and implications for our profession. Despite limited resources, the series, especially our student panel, was met with overwhelming positive response by faculty who were starved for guidance and support around this topic. One student panelist, Michael Weigand, a German international student, expressed it best: Far from irrelevant, education in the age of AI is more vital than ever. It requires us to return to the essentials: learning to learn, learning to think, and learning about ourselves and the world. His words powerfully echo this college's mission: to foster a socially conscious community and empower students to transform the world around them. In closing, Faculty PD is not optional. It is foundational. Funding the coordinator position is a necessary investment in our collective ability to realize the mission of this institution. It also signals the meaningful inclusion of faculty voices in shared governance. While we regret the time and energy it took to underscore what should have already been obvious, we are sincerely grateful for your decision and support. Throughout this statement, I've used the word "community" four times. Yes, I counted. That's because "community" five times is the heart of Faculty PD. It reminds us we are in this together and empowers us, in fact, to together transform the world. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Darlene Principay. I hope I said that right.
Hello. Good evening, Dr. Andrew Jonas, esteemed members of the Board of Trustees. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Darlene Principay. I am the sole faculty member, full-time faculty member, and the de facto chair of the Journalism Department, as well as faculty advisor to The Channels, the student-run newspaper here at SBCC. I just wanted to express my sincere thanks for your support of the Faculty Professional Development Coordinator position at our college. When I started at SBCC in August 2021, I was part of a small cohort, there were only three of us, who received our new faculty orientation entirely on Zoom. The COVID pandemic was still raging and I had only set foot on the campus twice before for informal meetings with my predecessor and my then-dean. Even our fall kickoff and faculty in-service that year was entirely virtual, so you can imagine it was kind of hard to connect with other colleagues. That first semester, I was one of a limited number of faculty who taught all of my classes in person, fully masked, five days a week, while the vast majority of faculty were still teaching online. I was excited and happy to be face-to-face with my students despite all the health risks. Still, it was a difficult start. Being new to the college and to the area, I didn't have any connections on campus, let alone in town, and I felt largely isolated as I tried to navigate being a new faculty member as well as a first-time chair. Like, I came into SBCC having to do program review and I had never done it before, so it was kind of a learning curve. Except for a few meetings here and there, I had very little interaction with other colleagues that first semester and it was fairly lonely, to be honest. I had my doubts about whether coming to SBCC and moving to Santa Barbara was the right decision. Of course, all of that changed when I attended the December 2021 Affective Learning Institute (ALI), where I got to spend three entire days face-to-face with colleagues from all across the college. Besides the pedagogical training that I received there, it was during the ALI that I finally started to feel a sense of community and belonging at SBCC. I mean, we talk about this for all of our students and sometimes we forget we faculty need it too. And as a side note, I also, during the ALI, happened to meet a colleague who told me about the AAPI Plus affinity group and invited me in. Because of that invitation, I eventually became part of the group that worked with artists to bring the AAPI Plus mural to the campus center in 2023. In the past four years, I've attended several more ALI events, as well as participated in restorative justice and Etero trainings put on by our Faculty PD. Not only have these trainings helped me to find community at SBCC, they've also given me a host of invaluable tools and resources to increase my confidence and effectiveness as an educator and department chair. And I'm not just saying that. I think you'd find my student success data from the last four years reflects that also. I'm able to cultivate strong relationships with my students in very large part because of the exceptional training I've received here at SBCC, which, as you know, has a huge impact on student retention and their overall success and their just happiness to be at school and on campus. So on that note, thank you again for protecting our Faculty PD and funding the coordinator position, as it is vital to the continual improvement of our work here at SBCC and ultimately the success of our students. And isn't that what we're all about? So thank you very much for letting me speak. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I did want to make one small comment, which is, it's nice to be thanked and it's nice to get credit, but the board does not get any of this thanks or credit because it's actually something we don't decide on. We don't direct deal and negotiations and something the administration works with the Faculty Association to work out. So the credit and thanks that you're directing at us, I hope you just redirect it towards our administration. And it is a negotiation, right? Negotiations do not start off, you know, final at the beginning. It's a process. You debate, you make arguments, you work out proposals, and then you get to a good place. So I'm glad that both sides were able to negotiate and come to an agreement that everyone seems to be happy with, but can't have the board take this credit because we only make decisions in public meetings and this decision was made not in a, you know, by the administration and the negotiating team, not by the board. But thank you for coming and it does, it's nice to have people come and talk about the positive things that have happened at the college as well. And so we do look forward to seeing how this plays out, the next TLUs of PD. And we do also want to hear about what's happened in the past and what are the goals for the future at a future board meeting still. So thank you, everybody, for, you know, all being a good team, working together on this. Next, we will go to approval of the minutes of June 26. Do we have a motion to approve for edits?
Still moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, if you're voting yes on the minutes, vote yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Need to do a roll?
Oh, yes, my mistake. Okay, Ms. Bosc, if you could, please do a roll call. Thank you. Please turn down.
Student trustee upon a med.
Present.
Trustee Morris?
Yes.
Trustee Abud?
Yes.
Trustee Croninger?
Yes.
Trustee Stoddard?
Yes.
Trustee Gullup Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Blackmertz?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to our communications section and we'll start with a report from associate students. Do you know if there's a report today?
Yes, so Sam should be joining us on Zoom shortly.
Okay, so we'll move.
He's not already there.
I don't think I see him myself on the Zoom. Or, yeah, his hands up if we can get him into the waiting room or into the panelist's room. Okay, sounds good. Sam, if you can hear us, please join. We're going to go to the next presentation, which is Academic Senate, Dr. Josh Vermeers. Dr. Vermeers, if I can just pause you for one second, I just need to acknowledge that we did receive another public comment from Anna Garcia for the agenda and it'll be entered into the record in the minutes, but we're not going to read it verbally right now. Sorry, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, trustee president Abud, members of the board, superintendent president Andrew Jonas. I am pleased to present the following four updates on behalf of the Academic Senate and our faculty colleagues. Today and also at the June 26 board meeting, you have seen a number of faculty and staff members address the board in public comment to express both their support for and concerns regarding the funding for our Faculty Professional Development Coordinator position. This position plays a vital role in faculty growth and student success by helping to meet the changing pedagogical needs of our college. Our inaugural PD coordinator, Justina Buller, could not be here tonight as she is attending to her parents, so I will speak on her behalf. You'll have to forgive me, I'm improvising here. Justina Buller wanted to be here tonight to say thank you in person but had to attend a family emergency, so I am passing along her gratitude and her hope that faculty will be invited back in the future to share more about the work we are doing to help improve student success. And we wish Justina well as well. It was Justina who communicated the importance of proper funding for this role and requested the continuation of funding at nine TLUs per semester, originally 12. When faculty were notified that only three TLUs would be allocated, you've seen many faculty and staff who have benefited from these developmental, these development opportunities and organized collectively voicing the need for sustainable support. We are grateful that we have received notice that the administration, from the administration, that the coordinator position will now be funded at nine TLUs. We see this as a constructive compromise. The Senate and faculty extend our deep appreciation to the Faculty Association, especially Cornelia Alzheimer, for all of their tireless advocacy. We are grateful to the board, I know that you just said that the board does not participate in direct negotiation, but we just wanted to say we are grateful that you heard us out. And of course, our thanks to the administration as well for taking the time to hear out our perspectives about the needs of the campus community. Additional thanks are due to all faculty and staff who participated in public comments or attended, attended these meetings demonstrating our commitment to collaboration. The next PD coordinator, however, will face a number of challenges, only exacerbated should AB 705 or AB 1705 not be revised to allow students to take pre-transfer English and math courses that they need to succeed in their first year of college. Also exacerbated by the evolving impact of artificial intelligence on teaching and learning. Also exacerbated by decreases in federal funding for teaching innovation, for which we have a long history on this campus. We have acquired a number of Title V and III federal grants that have fueled professional development and innovation on this campus. Despite these hurdles, the dedication and resilience of our faculty remain unwavering. At this point, there is an opportunity for all of us to be better partners in the endeavors of the next PD coordinator. Having talked on separate occasions with President Abud and Trustee Morris, I agree there is a need to ensure that we are investing in these positions in a data-informed fashion and make room for adjustments as needed, but this is a good time for articulating what performance indicators will best capture the efficacy of our professional development investments at the start of the next coordinator's work. The end is the beginning whenever it comes to educational endeavors like professional development. I've also let Trustee Morris know that I will be sending a third memo to the board following up what questions he had about data on our professional development efforts as well. The Academic Senate's retreat is scheduled for August 20, where we are hoping to invite guest speakers following our senators and ITC chair's visit to the Curriculum Institute this summer. We will be taking advantage of our ASCC consultation on artificial intelligence. I met with leaders of the Teaching and Learning Committee, including our new distance ed coordinator, Dr. Matt Mooney, to discuss the English department's concerns over student misuse of AI and workload and technological issues surrounding detection of AI-generated work. The Senate also invited the Chair of English to share these concerns as well with the Senate, and we hope to continue this discussion at the retreat and to prepare our agenda for the coming year. Among the priorities include a revisitation of what our financial investment in Turnitin is doing to curb academic dishonesty, if at all, but also an opportunity to investigate what new features are being introduced that are less aimed at trying to catch students in a gotcha moment, and to utilizing new applications that will move students towards using AI as an active partner for some of our disciplines that teach writing in the discipline, and to return them to the development process. A revisitation of AP 5550 regarding academic integrity, for which we might explore clearly articulated syllabus policies as a requirement of any determination of student misuse of AI in what needs to be an updated process that starts first with dialoguing with our students about their use of AI as they learn to dip into its use, along with the rest of us. The last thing that we want to do is to position ourselves in a fashion that polices students and at the same time that they are trying to learn how to use it. AI literacy in the curriculum and whether or not we can create standalone courses or required onboarding so students can learn where the campus stands on its AI use, and creating professional development opportunities, not just for faculty and not just for college faculty, but for educators regionally regardless of the tier of education. We can't think of policies around AI with SBCC as an island onto itself. From high school to upper division transfer institutes, we need to know where our partners are in their integration of AI in their teaching. Next update regarding this evening's agenda, the Senate's attention has been drawn to item 11.2, a sunshining proposal with a new article focusing on program discontinuance. I preface this discussion around this briefly towards the end of yesterday's Senate meeting, advising our Senate reps to attend to this watchfully but tentatively. Per Title V, subsection 51022, the ASCC has longstanding resolutions and administrative procedures that situate program discontinuance as an academic and professional matter for which Senate involvement is not only required but central to the maintenance of a viable curriculum, the continued educational prospects of students, and the needs of community and industry leaders. We do not see this as a negotiable item. And lastly, should tonight's board agenda progress otherwise uneventually, I may try to sneak into tonight's production of Young Frankenstein, which, if you visit the SBCC Theater Group's website, is sold out for its three final performances. On that note, Pamela Shaw suggested that I might be able to sneak in to see, to sit in the usher seats if I'm lucky, but I also hope this demonstrably reinforces how much the theater group means to this community and to our students. As I mentioned in my memo to the board, the performing arts are not an extracurricular luxury. They are a vital part of a thriving educational community. My thanks to the community for coming out so enthusiastically on behalf of our colleagues in the theater arts. Everyone, thank you for hearing my report tonight.
I had one clarifying question. Did you, I think I understood you correctly, but the AI class, is that like a class to learn how to do good prompts and how to use AI correctly?
That would be part of it, yes. I mean, prompt generation was actually something that was considered a marketable skill for jobs that don't yet exist.
Yeah, and the ones that exist, I'd send my employees to take that class. I'd go myself, too.
Possibilities of situating something like this in non-credit open to everyone. I think that there are a lot of possibilities.
And yeah, I saw Young Frankenstein. All over social media, people are trying to get tickets and trade with each other. So, Trustee Blackmertz.
Yeah, I recently attended Robin Hood when it was, you know, a few months ago, as well as Young Frankenstein, and I thought it was phenomenal. I took my mom to see it and it was really great. Production quality is amazing. They can pack a house. I mean, for a community college production, it's just like, what are you even doing? This is so good. So in referencing your memo, I'm just wondering what kind of fundraising the theater arts department does in addition to foundation funding or anything like that? What is, and sales of tickets? Is there any additional, like philanthropic work that the theater department does within the town?
I mean, one of the things that I do understand is that for the longest time, we depended upon donor funds. We depended upon the foundation to be able to help supplement the theater's work. It is not easy to be able to just simply acquire donor funds for the performing arts. What is in conversation right now, I haven't gotten a chance to be able to sit down with Dave Morrison, with Bobby Abram, and also Paul Menzel, was the idea that maybe there might be some contacts in the Santa Barbara area in Los Angeles to be able to shore up donor funds. donor funds. The other things that they are doing unavoidably, they are having to raise prices, and at the same time, they're trying to make sure that the price point doesn't piece out people of the community who want to be able to come see this. There are other things that they could do, like offer straight plays, for example, because they do not require as much choreography. They do not require the same compliment of musicians. They do not require the same changes in sets as well, but they are not nearly the draw that musicals are. But musicals also come with heightened costs, particularly because of royalties that they have to be able to pay on top of musicians, on top of choreography. But we've seen what the end results are. We have packed seats for this. The theater arts group has been very creative at trying to maintain a very efficient budget, and so.
Yes. If you'd like to, but at the podium, we can get it on tape. Not tape, I guess, YouTube.
I've been here over 30 years and been talking about this. In the past, the theater department was told to not do any fundraising, that it should be through the foundation, because you don't want to duplicate efforts, you don't want to. So that was a, that's why the current lack of funding that was very suddenly told from the foundation was kind of a shock. So if that is a change in policy, it needs to be explored more fully. But I wanted you to understand, it wasn't from want of interest or creativity, or they were literally asked not to because it's a fantastic program that the foundation appreciated, riding on the coattails of, to raise money and to not, you know, come at people without coordination. So I wanted you to know that if they now need to add this to their already overworked lives, they, we don't have many full-time faculty left, that some coordination and planning would be really helpful. So thank you for asking about it.
Yeah, I just want to mention, I work, my day job is in government, and with the ending of, you know, multiple entitlement funds and sort of funding uncertainty, even in government, we're starting to direct staff to become grant writers and seek out funding from philanthropic sources. And so I think shifting the mindset away from depending fully on the foundation to more individualized departmental fundraising may be a potential shift.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, is it like short? Because we're getting.
Sure, it's real short. This is regarding the theater fundraising.
Okay.
I've been working with them directly over the last two months, so this is updated information, and we are working on several different fundraising options within the theater and within the community. So we are deep into this task, FYI.
And just to be clear, this is purely selfish, because I would like to see much more production.
Thank you.
And thank you for keeping this in conversation.
I think we have two short questions still for you. Trustee Croninger.
I will indicate there's a historic concern about fundraising that is separate from the foundation, so it's something that needs to be coordinated. But my question was, back to AI, has the faculty focused on the potential effects of AI on the jobs that may be available to our students after they graduate? Because that seems like a large topic that needs to be thought through, as well as the impacts on our teaching, because there are many articles about how quickly this may occur and how it may change the job availability in the next five years, for example.
Well, one thing that I want to share, one of the most compelling things that came out of the spring AI series, for which we have the faculty here who have headed up that work, one of the first things that they wanted to do was to situate what the student voice is on what the future job market looks like. And the things that we have heard from students are, I am worried that I am majoring in an area of study for which that line of work will no longer exist. It is a very big concern that the students have, and that just says, this is a conversation that we have to have institution-wide, and it's also something that we need to have regionally as well. We are not alone in trying to figure out how to reconcile AI with what we teach. And yes, that means that we need professional development to help start this work, to do the overhaul that we need to when it comes to the entire curriculum. And we are going to come at this also at varying levels of acceptance. Some will be happy to explore AI in their teaching and say, this is really the future. Others are going to say, well, with the restriction, because we need to guide students' use. And then others who will say, for very strong pedagogical reasons, I'm not ready to see this to them just yet. You have a confluence of challenges here where students are coming to us without some of the literacy skills that they need to have. But what happens when AI gives you an avenue to be able to seemingly sidestep that? And can we really be the one-stop-gap that says, no AI whatsoever, when high schools are adopting this, and when we have transfer institutes like the CSU adopting a platform all of their own? And so these are conversations that this next PD coordinator is going to have to tackle, which is why I think it's a good opportunity for us to be able to say, we all need to be partners when it comes to professional development and what that will look like from here on out. Because there are worries, we are falling behind. It is our relevance as an institution that is now at risk. So yes, prompt generation, that's at least one of the angles. The other is to be able to say, AI is an avenue for us to be able to offer inquiry into what it is doing. It is plugged into the internet in ways that we previously did not anticipate. That also means that it's plugged into all the flotsam on the internet that just makes conversation among us that much more difficult. For lack of a better way to describe it, some are actually suggesting AI is actually getting dumber as we speak, because it is plugged into all of the flotsam on the internet, teaching students how to navigate that in the future, and also to be able to appraise what communication that it offers. Those are the skills that we need to foster as well.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
I just want to rewind to the theater arts program. You mentioned potentially increasing ticket prices for community members. Do you think that's going to affect Activity Pass prices for students on campus?
To that, I would have to defer to the people who know this best. I'm not at liberty to be able to say. What I can say is that what they want to make sure is that they do not price not only members of the community, but also students out as well. But also, the choice of programming will also change the makeup, at least I see. It will change the makeup of what educational opportunities our students have, and that's something that we need to keep in conversation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to our associate students' report.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you are all having a wonderful day.
Sam, if you could excuse us. Ma'am, are you trying to make a public comment?
Yes, and I apologize for being late. And speaking of AI, I attempted to come here with the wave, but their AI system broke down, and so this is the result. I had to go to Plan B, the regular buses.
Okay, well, we'd love to hear your public comment, but we do have a line of people already in the queue, so.
My name was called first.
Oh, were you?
Lorraine Graham.
Lorraine, okay, I do need to still let these people finish.
Okay, but.
I'll come back to you.
Sir, the last bus leaves at 6:12.
I understand. Okay.
If you would be so kind.
Then go ahead. Yeah, I didn't understand. Please go ahead.
Thank you so much.
And we'll do five minutes.
Thank you.
Sorry, Sam, we'll get back to you.
Thank you so much. Dear Board of Trustees, I'm here because of a concern that has become a significant barrier to my educational success and I believe to the success of others in our community who face similar challenges. As a person with intellectual disabilities, a traumatic brain injury, and dyslexia, I am deeply concerned about the current course offerings at Santa Barbara City College, most of which are online. I want to request that the Board of Trustees consider allowing me to speak longer than the allotted five-minute time, to ensure that my voice is fully heard, as my experiences reflect broader concerns that deserves attention. Under Section 202 of the American with Disabilities Act, reasonable accommodation. I ask for this accommodation to allow me to speak in full about the impact that this issue has on my academic journey and my ability to fully participate in the educational opportunities provided by SBCC. I am an elderly disabled woman of color and a five-time cancer survivor. As I approach the latest stages of my life, I feel a deep calling to dedicate my remaining years to serving others, specifically the elderly disabled members of our community. It is my mission to promote healthy aging, and I truly believe that SBCC is uniquely positioned to offer the programs in support that our community desperately needs. In particular, the Healthy Aging Certificate AA Degree Program, which was previously offered at SBCC, could be revitalized to meet the needs of the growing aging population in Santa Barbara County, where over 121,000 adults aged 60-plus live, with more than 32% of them living alone. However, there is a glaring issue that must be addressed, the shift to predominantly online courses, which has proven to be a serious barrier for students as me. While I understand that online learning offers convenience, it fails to meet my needs as a student with intellectual disabilities and cognitive challenges. Online classes require a level of technological proficiency and self-directed learning that I struggle with, especially after undergoing chemotherapy, which has left me with cognitive impairments. In fact, I have shared these concerns with Dr. Christina Hopson and Jonathan Ward, who have supported my presence here today. I have also discussed with PE Director Kathy O'Connor and Kelly Clark, who are aware of my challenges and goals. But despite their understanding, the fact remains that nearly 95, thank you, nearly 95% of the courses offered at SBCC are online, which continues to undermine my academic process. The difficulty I face with online learning has placed me on academic probation due to insufficient unit completion. This is not simply a matter of preference, it is an issue of accessibility. As studies have shown, students of color and older adults, such as me, perform significantly worse in online courses. A recent study by UC Davis, UC Irvine, and the University of Pennsylvania found that students, especially those from Black and Latino backgrounds, perform poorly in online courses compared to in-person courses. This is especially concerning, given that SBCC is a public institution funded by taxpayer dollars, which should be accessible to all students, including those in DSPS student programs. I am deeply concerned that the move towards predominantly online courses at SBCC is excluding students as me. It feels as though decisions are being made without fully considering the diverse needs of all students, particularly those of us who are disabled.
Ma'am, could I ask you to stop for one moment? I know you requested more than five minutes. Approximately how much more do you need?
I would say two minutes.
Two minutes is good. They can do two and a half.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate your courtesy. SBCC's funding derived from taxpayer dollars and local measures such as Measure P further reinforce the responsibility of the college to provide an accessible and inclusive education. The current trend of offering courses primarily in an online format is leaving students as me and many others with limited options. I can only enroll in one or two courses per semester due to the lack of in-person offerings. This not only affects my academic standing, but also leaves me with a frustrating need to repeatedly appeal my academic probation status, only to find that the in-person courses I need are no longer available. It is my belief that SBCC has an opportunity to correct this problem by offering more in-person classes, especially for students in the DSPS program. A return to the in-person learning would not only benefit students as myself, but also ensure that SBCC continues to fulfill its role as a publicly funded institution that serves the diverse needs of our community. In addition, I strongly urge that the Board of Trustees to ensure that all future requests for proposals, RFPs issued by SBCC explicitly require the inclusion of a person with disabilities in every phase of planning and implementation from conception to completion. I'm almost done. This would guarantee the accessibility needs are not an afterthought, but an integral part of the design and execution of any project, specifically with the upcoming Life Fitness Center. I ask that the college demonstrate its commitment to disability access by ensuring the faculty fully meets the needs of DSPS students, including those with physical, cognitive, and sensory disabilities. An exclusive fitness center is essential, not only to the physical wellness, but also to the dignity and for participation of disabled students to campus life. I urge the Board of Trustees to reconsider the current course offering model, consider the specific needs of disabled students and those who struggle with online learning. Additionally, I thank the Board for allowing me to extend the time to speak this evening, so I can fully express my concerns and offer solutions that will help with all the students at SBCC succeed. Thank you for your time, your attention, and commitment to making SBCC a truly accessible institution for all. I look forward to working with you to address this issue and ensure that all students as I can enroll and fully participate in this upcoming fall semester and take advantage of educational opportunities offered at SBCC. And moving forward, I would want to meet with your designated representative to resolve the above-mentioned issues so that I can avail myself to in-person courses as soon as possible. Respect and gratitude, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll go next to our, back to our communications with our associate students' report.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the board. July has been a quiet month for student government, as most students are off-campus, but we're using this time to prepare for the start of the fall semester. We're looking forward to welcoming students back and hitting their ground running. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you. Next up is our classified staff report from Liz Oshinclass. Liz, I see you in the room. Are you available to? There we go.
Good afternoon, members of the board, board president, college president. I just have a short, brief report. We're in, continuing to be in negotiations. Today, we have sunshined our Article One, which we didn't do in our first sunshining. That has to do with the recognition and the makeup of our unit, that we're interested in exploring a change. We also had a new article, which we've pretty much negotiated for discipline and due process, which we spent a lot of time, but seems to be going well. We also look forward to opening up negotiations about the short-term employees and the student workers. We'd like to open up a conversation with the district administration in order to help us understand why they still need these people and that they're not hiring them to replace us when positions aren't being filled. And the last thing I have is I want to acknowledge one of our CSA members, Parker Shankton Clark, has been awarded the Activist of the Year Award by the State of CSA. The conference is going on right now, and he was presented at conference a couple of days ago. He gave us talk also to the entire conference, which is like over 1,500 people. So I wanted to congratulate him, and part of his nomination form was acknowledging all the work he did to help the bond issue get passed. So it's kind of related to the college that way. But I want to congratulate him on receiving that award. But I want to congratulate him on receiving that award. And that's pretty much my report. Thanks.
Thank you. I did see Parker a lot during the bond campaign, and please pass along the congratulations.
I will. Thank you.
And next up is Faculty Association.
Good afternoon, honorable members of the Board of Trustees. President Abud, Dr. Andrew Jonas. Next slide, please. Here are my topics for today. I would like to get started with the topic of our Faculty Professional Development Coordinator position. You heard from fellow employees last month and today about the importance of this position, as well as funding it, even in somewhat strenuous budgetary times. And that part is already done. The administration has identified appropriate funding for this position, and we want to say thank you for this. Our negotiation teams have already scheduled a special meeting for early August to finalize this item. So this is very exciting news, and I'm super optimistic that we will have something to show to you at your next meeting. On my second topic, I had to change plans a little bit. I thought today I would be sharing with you a report out of our joint meeting with the FAA, the Senate, the trustee leadership, and members of the administration. It was initially scheduled for yesterday. However, we are now looking for a new meeting date in August. So I have to ask everyone for a few more weeks of patience. Nevertheless, given that the faculty had already done extensive preparation for the originally scheduled meeting, the FAA and Academic Senate representatives did use yesterday's time slot and our handouts and some German chocolate bars to have a very productive discussion among ourselves. So we are ready to go whenever we find a new meeting date. And thank you again, Rita, for making the room reservation for us. Next slide, please. There is a lot of sunshining going on at this meeting today, not only coming from the outdoors, but also included in several items on today's agenda. We just heard from the CSA sunshine proposal. We have an FAA sunshine proposal, and we have a district sunshine proposal. And that is the one I would like to start out with. First and foremost, a hooray again for the two items at the very top line of this slide. As you know, we have already signed an agreement on that part-time faculty health insurance. It will actually go into effect this fall. This only needs to be moved into the contract. It will show up in two places in the contract, and therefore it is mentioned in the district's proposal twice. But hey, you can never talk too much about a very good thing. We also see some overlap in district and FAA interests on other items like evaluations and part-time faculty seniority rights. The one item I just want to share a first comment on is the one at the very bottom left of this slide, and that is program discontinuance. And I'm careful to not overstepping here, but I want us to be aware upfront that for this topic, there is not only a college procedure already in place, AP 3255, but there is also ed code, as well as numerous publications that clearly support program discontinuance as a mandatory item falling under the ten plus one with the Academic Senate. So whatever the district had in mind regarding this very sensitive topic, we need to be aware about the legal and policy environment here. But I'm confident that we will figure this all out at the negotiation table once we get started. Next slide, please. More sunshine coming up. This is the FAA proposal. I know it's a long list, and yes, I know there's too much text on this slide. I want to highlight for the Board that lots of these items are non-monetary in nature, and I hope especially Chris Renbarger will appreciate this. While not all our proposals come for free, please be assured that the FAA had the current proposal, the current budget situation in the back of our minds when we were putting this list together. Finally, I do want to acknowledge a typo in the attachment that you have in your agenda. On the topic, academic freedom, I overdid it a little bit with a copy and paste. Your agenda attachment mistakenly references evaluation in the explanation for the academic freedom section. The slide here highlights in blue the correct wording on the top right. In summary, we are looking forward with great optimism to meeting with the new district negotiation team for this next chapter of interest-based bargaining. Next slide, please. And this is already my last slide. As always, I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have, and I want to thank you for your attention, your support, and wish you a great rest of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our Superintendent President's report.
Thank you. It's nice to be back from our annual family trip to Wells, Maine, where I enjoyed a great deal of lobster, played a lot of cards and dice games, all while soaking up the sun and checking in on SBCC items every now and then, including meetings with constituent groups to do the board agenda review, our regular executive committee meeting, and reviewing the board agenda with Board President Abud and Vice President Richards. One other detour from my vacation was to participate in the bond credit rating meeting with Vice President Chris Renbarger, our financial advisors and representatives from Standards &amp; Poor. I'm happy to report that Santa Barbara City College maintained its AA+ rating, which is the highest possible rating for a non-basic aid district, so that's good news. As noted in prior meetings, we are likely to sell bonds in early August to secure our portion of the PE funds and a bit more to get some other projects underway. The process of identifying and prioritizing those projects will begin in the fall with the establishment of the Bond Work Group, which I've talked about at numerous CPC and other meetings. Stay tuned for more details on that new participatory governance group. I was glad to return back this Monday and to get back into the swing of things, and I want to thank everyone for holding everything down while I took the vacation. But speaking of keeping things running, I want to give a huge shout-out to Chris Renbarger, Rob Morales, and Mark Broomfeld, and our contractor Carlos Campos for making the necessary HVAC improvements to the building that currently houses our cosmetology academy. A big shout-out also to the Cosmetology Department Chair Sarah Jackson, her faculty and staff, and Dean Devin Doherty for making the transition to and from virtual instruction work for students so that the necessary improvements could be made. While I was away, I still kept tabs on the happenings in Santa Barbara County and what continues to be ICE taking our community members from our streets. The display that happened in Carpinteria and Ventura County a few weeks ago was heartbreaking to see. Families torn apart and lives disrupted, leaving fear and uncertainty rampant in our community. Here at SBCC, I want to remind the community and our students that we are a place of learning, and our goal is to provide supportive, safe spaces for you, our students, to learn. We are also a place of learning for everyone else in our community. We will continue to share our resources to support all of our community members, and again, continue to prioritize your opportunities to broaden everyone's horizons and thrive. We stand with our students and their right to learn in safety and in dignity. And lastly, I brought back saltwater taffy from Maine, so stop by my office if you'd like a taste. That concludes my report.
Thank you, and thank you for making the statement on the raids in our community. Next, we will move to eleven point four, our Scale Microgrid Project, which is so exciting. We've been talking about this for a couple of years now, and it's good to see progress happening and make an important project a reality.
President Abud, Board of Trustees. Superintendent Jonas, thank you for the opportunity to present. It's very exciting. Just a little over a year ago, this board approved our opportunity to apply for a grant that made this stage in the process possible. So there have been some additional changes, and I want to let you know that we've contracted with Stone...
David Stone.
David Stone, thank you, sorry. To help us with coastal commission process for this as well. So that's in the works in addition to the work that Scale Microgrid is doing, and I will let them introduce themselves as they present. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Hello, everybody. My name is Alex Vofk. I'm with a company called Scale Microgrids, and I'm joined here with my colleagues Wyatt and Shay. We've been working for the last year with Chris and the broader facilities team at SBCC on a new community microgrid project on campus. So first, I'm going to offer a quick introduction about our company, Scale. We've been in business for ten years, founded in 2016 in New Jersey. At this point, we have developed around fifty microgrid projects, both on the east and west coast. We have several projects already in operation in California specifically. We've engaged with the SBCC team around a year ago with the idea of bringing together a microgrid. So what's a microgrid? Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. A microgrid is very simple idea. It's solar plus energy storage that's connected to the building, connected to the grid. And what makes it different is that it can work when the grid is down. So apart from just offering savings, it offers resiliency benefits for the college. Next slide. I'm going to try to just offer a quick overview and talk about where we're at right now, present the project, and please feel free to interrupt and ask any questions as they may come up. So we started working a year ago. We started with analyzing the utility data of the college. We did a site visit. We identified a program called the CIRI Grant to help fund the project. So currently, the project is 1.6 megawatts of solar and around two megawatts of battery storage, which will cover around forty-two percent of the energy consumption of the college. And significantly offer savings to the college and significantly reduce CO2 emissions. After developing the project, we applied for the grant. Late last year, we basically were approved and received $4.2 million. And since then, we've been working on refining the initial design to come up with something firmed up for you to review. Next slide. So the college is broken up from an electric engineering standpoint into two subgrids and two meters. It's the west campus and the east campus. The main thing to know is that this means that our microgrid has to be broken up in two sides, which are both east and west. Next slide. Yeah, so here you can see just some of the details of the project and like how it's going to work, when we're going to charge the battery from its solar, when are we going to discharge it? Again, the main thing, the high-level thing to know here is that it's a solar carport, 1.6 megawatts. We're currently not doing anything on the rooftops, but there is an opportunity to do solar on the new PE building. And we're installing twenty-two Level 2 EV chargers. There's a lot of resiliency value. That's the whole idea. This is going to be a community microgrid. And right now, it's designed and can offer power to sustain the college if there's a public safety shut-off of the grid for eight hours. That's the minimum. And then depending on if we manage some of the loads or reduce consumption on the college, the battery can power the campus for twenty-four hours and longer, depending on how much load we take off from the grid. Next slide. So this is the layout. The majority of the solar, as you can see here, is on the west campus parking lot four. There is currently a solar installation there. We're going to replace that with new, modern solar panels that are substantially more efficient and then bring substantially more power. The other part is on the east campus. The east campus is slightly more complicated because there's more trees. There's a little bit of visibility from the coast, so there are some considerations around the coastal commission and so forth. So we're going to work to maximize that, but that has been a slightly more challenging environment. Now, the batteries are located. We cannot see them here, but one is located around the west campus, around the green kind of circle over there. And the other one is located in the east campus, closer to the entrance to the parking lots. Next slide.
We have a question.
Just a quick question. What are the green dots? What do they indicate on that slide?
There we go.
Were they where the batteries are, or is that something else?
No, so those are big trees for our consideration. As far as I remember, those are little live oaks that we cannot touch.
Oh, okay. So there's trees that aren't being taken out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course. Next slide. Okay, so environmental and sustainability impact. The parking lots are really beautiful with a lot of trees. Some are bigger, some are smaller, some of higher importance from an environmental standpoint, some of lower importance. To build out the carport solar project as we currently designed it, we will have to address some of those trees. So we're envisioning removing twenty-nine on the east campus and twenty-four on the west campus, and we're looking to trim some on the east campus. For that, we're working with David Stone, who's the environmental consultant, to create a mitigation plan and a relocation plan. None of those are going to be live oaks, the trees of higher concern. And the environmental impact of the project is going to be a reduction of 1.3... 1.3... 1,300 tons of CO2 emissions equivalent. That's a great number. It doesn't really kind of resonate, right? That means that we're going to reduce as much emissions through the construction of the solar and the battery as we would reduce by planting out 63,000 trees. That's in one year. The total impact is going to be equivalent to about the lifetime emissions that we're reducing is going to be equivalent to around one million trees.
Jesse Richards.
Yeah, I don't know. Is it okay to ask questions? With regard to the trees, are we replacing them one for one? Or what's the ratio of how they're being replanted?
So we're developing that plan with David Stone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's still in the works.
That'll be vetted through the coastal commission then.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
So you're saying that we're not going to be removing any live oaks? Do you know what kind of trees we are removing?
Do you know what kind? Yeah, I cannot tell you right now what kind of trees they are, but they're mostly really narrow, young growth, and they're the ones in the parking lot.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Jesse Gaultmore, did you have your question now, or do you want to wait?
I could wait till he's done. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So the thing to highlight is that the trees that we're proposing to remove and trim are going to be replanted, and we're going to work like on the right proportion and where to replant them with our environmental consultant. And overall, just looking at the numbers, let's say, even if we're like ten percent wrong on the environmental impact that this is going to have, it's still way, way, like orders of magnitude outweighs the tree removal that we're envisioning to build out the carport solar. Next slide. Okay, so this is, I think, the big one, right? Like, this all sounds great. Who's paying for it? So the total budget of the project is $17 million. 4.2 is coming from the CEC, so that is the California Energy Commission, and that's federal money. That's a federal grant. So that leaves $13 million. Around half of it is going to be covered by federal tax credits, the investment tax credit for solar and battery storage. The rest is going to be paid for by our company, Scale Microgrids. So we're going to be the operator and owner of the project. And in return, we're going to receive what's called a microgrid service payment from the college. So the way it works in net numbers is the project is going to save the college $780,000 per year in utility bill savings. So that's a reduction of payment to the SE or the utility provider. And the college would pay Scale Microgrids a service payment of $672,000. So net-net, this means that there is nothing to pay upfront, and the savings are going to be $109,000 per year for the college. And this is already a factor.
Just a question. Go ahead.
This sort of project is not currently popular with the feds, so I'm wondering what happens if the grant goes away. The federal money aspect of it.
So the source of the grant is the Department of Energy, and there have been a lot of cuts within the department and within the grants they offer. But thankfully, this is one of the grants that kind of passed through. And the reason for that... And the reason for that, I think, is because it's not actually paying for the solar, it's paying for battery storage, which is what's called dispatchable power, which is still in favor. So it has, the point is that it has been under review and it has not been touched. So it's a green light. Thank you. And all of this already includes all of the tariffs that have been placed, all of the restrictions, so this is very current pricing. We don't envision any upward revisions on it. And also, which I personally think is cool, we're working, we have a PLA with the IBW. So we're working with Union Electricians and Union Labor. And the lifetime of the project, so the useful lifetime is 25 years. And we envision saving the college $5.4 million over that period of time. Next slide. So the big next step forward for us, since we've completed the design, is entering into a microgrid services agreement, which basically lays out everything that we have talked about so far. We've offered it to the team previously for kind of a first scan. But I imagine that if this is of interest to you to proceed, the next step would be to have a, take a second look and review it in more detail. Next slide. Oh, and then, so Scale Microgrids is going to be the owner, but under the terms of the contract, the college has the right to buy out the project at certain points throughout the lifecycle of the agreement. Yeah, so here are the next steps. We need to finalize the design, the tree removal. We're looking for support of the college for the Public Common College Planning Council. We're applying for one more incentive called the SGIP for this project. And then we need to negotiate and finalize this microgrid agreement. And here on the right, you can see a execution timeline. So I'd say this is a kind of a really pessimistic timeline. So in the pessimistic situation, we're going to execute on the project and have it online in the March of 2028. But hopefully, we're going to be, we're going to deliver before. So we want to like over, under, under promise over deliver. Next slide. Yeah, thank you for your attention. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Trustee Gullitmore.
So I heard you say that you're based out of New Jersey, is that correct?
That is where the company headquarters are. We have two offices in California, one in Los Angeles and one in San Francisco.
Okay, and Trustee Croninger, thank you for bringing up the concern. I too am very concerned. I did, I do understand your explanation that you have the green light. However, because of the signing of the big beautiful bill, it does cut incentives for businesses, like your business, that's in the business of having these solar projects. And I also heard you say that you're the owner and that we would be responsible in making maintenance payments to you and that we can buy out that contract at certain points. I'm very concerned on what that contract, what the language says and what we're paying out because should it get, become more challenging for your company to get parts for maintenance, that's going to be higher cost on us. I don't know what the language says in your current contract, but we need to be aware of that and make sure that we're not responsible if it goes over a certain set amount of money. Now, I am a huge advocate of sustainability and saving the planet. So I really, I was extremely joyed to see this on our agenda. Please let me be clear with that. I like the fact that we're doing this. However, again, because of what just passed on a federal level and a lot of this is dependent on federal funding, there's going to be an impact. And I just would like to suggest to our president, our board president and our CEO that we really look at the verbiage in this contract, that we're not in a situation where we are paying a large amount of money or we have to keep increasing the payments because of the impact that your company may potentially suffer due to the current political climate.
Yes, absolutely. First of all, the college definitely has to diligently review the contract and to bring up any issues that might arise. To your point specifically, there are two things that would protect you under the contract. The first is that the payments are fixed. So there is no mechanism within the contract for us to change or amend or increase the payments if our costs increase. And the second one is that we have a built-in, we have a performance guarantee built in into the contract. So if we do not meet the performance, the performance promised under it, so we do not deliver the kilowatt hours of energy as we promised, you just, we're going to be penalized for it, basically.
Thank you for that.
Do you have any other questions, Dr. Gullitmore?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So you mentioned that at some point, the new PE building could be used as a solar, the top of it. Now, I was on the facilities committee when we were talking about the PE building. And I was told at that time that it was not being built for solar, that it was not designed to hold solar panels.
Trustee, I think Vice President Ren Barker has an answer to that.
Great.
So the, the design is actually modified and it is, it is solar capable. And in fact, I had a meeting with the architect just in the last couple of days. And they encouraged that if the board is interested in moving forward this project, they'd like to start having conversations with Scale about the design for solar on the building itself.
That's great, thank you.
Other questions? Yes.
Who makes the panels and the batteries?
All right, so they are, the cool thing about this project is everything is going to be assembled in the US. And we're going to, there is a bill called BABA. So that's Build America by America. So we're going to, going to be fully BABA compliant.
And the second question is, you said you had projects on the west coast and the east coast. Can you give me a couple of examples of west coast projects?
Oh, yeah. Could you guys help me out?
You actually have some on slide 21, if you want to go back to the slides.
Good afternoon. My name is Shay Hughes. I'm our Vice President of Business Development at Scale Microgrids. I've been with the company for six years. And we've built projects for transit authorities, school districts, water districts, and many, many private sector companies around the state. One of our projects that was just recently finished is a transit, is a, is a electric bus project for a fleet, a private fleet in Los Angeles by the name of QCD. They're a large distributor for Starbucks and many other large organizations. We've done a project for Santa Margarita Water District down in Orange County, a large battery project for their wastewater treatment plant. We've done a couple of microgrid projects for Petaluma City Schools, so up in Sonoma County, middle school and a high school there. We've worked with, let's see, transit authorities such as the Valley Transit Authority. They are actually, the project is under construction right now, but that should be finished in about the next year or so. So that's a few examples.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Given what happened at the Santa Barbara Airport, maybe you could talk to them.
Trustee Richards.
Yeah, I had a question about the battery storage units. How big are they? What do they look like? You know, and how safe are they?
Yeah, so there are two units currently were designed by Tesla in our layout. They look like a shipping container, very similar. That's the standard enclosure. The size of it to visualize is just like maybe a, like a parking, one parking lot. Or kind of, yeah, one parking unit. They are used across the country. So right now, there's a program in New York City where they're deploying these batteries. And they are placed in Manhattan and Brooklyn and so forth. So there's like, I can go into engineering details around what exact systems and protections are used. But the point is that we can share that in kind of a, maybe a written form. But there are numerous, numerous technologies that I, that I implemented at this point to make them as safe as humanly possible.
Yeah, I mean, there was a major incident, you know, not long ago up in Moss Landing, I guess, that had a out-of-control battery storage that, that kept going. And it was difficult for them to get under control. Is this the same technology? And if so, you know, what kind of safety measures are in place here that maybe weren't there?
Yeah, so the euphemism is thermal runway. That was a different chemistry. It was called NMC. We're using lithium phosphate batteries, which are orders of magnitude more safe. And there have been, maybe you can speak, speak to it more specifically. But there haven't been really any issues with this different chemistry.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I can just add, yeah, those batteries were designed in, I believe, like 2017. And they were basically put on like server racks inside of a large building. These Tesla batteries are put in, you know, self-contained containers such that if there were to be an event that happened, there would be no propagation to, to cause, you know, the massive catastrophe that was Moss Landing, right? The entire building, you know, one, one battery cell failed. And then it propagated to the next and the next and the next. And in these containers, even within the enclosure, they're separated by, you know, steel walls so that you don't have that propagation. There's always a little bit of risk with, with lithium batteries. You hear about, you know, Teslas in, in the sense of the cars or electric vehicles as a whole. But as Alex said, the LFP chemistry is much safer and the design of the enclosures prevents that propagation that you saw at Moss Landing.
Okay, thank you.
And I should have mentioned, we also have a project with the Galeno Water District as well. That's the closest to our neck of the woods here. So thank you.
Yeah, I had another question about, pardon me.
Go ahead.
No, we'll go.
Yeah, another question about the resiliency aspect and about the ability to keep the, the college and the campus operating in the event of an emergency. You know, we've talked about our new PE building being a hub and an opportunity to maybe have a gathering space in the case of a local emergency. And you mentioned that, I guess, the batteries would allow the campus, the entire campus to run for 24 hour, eight hours.
So, yeah, it was eight hours if there is no load management, right? We don't remove any, any load from the grid. If we manage it, we can, we can go up to 24 hours and even more, depending on what specifically we take off the grid.
Okay, so the management that you're talking about then is like isolating some buildings and diverting power to them and then taking others offline. Is that a conversation? When would we have that conversation about how to prioritize that and how that would look? Is that a part of this process? Or is that something that would come later? Or, you know, when, when would we just talk about that?
I think it would be, it's an ongoing process, right? So the design isn't still fixed yet. And I think that like, would be happy to work with Chris and you and the team to incorporate those desires. Because definitely, the idea is that this is a community resilience hub, right? So we know that there's one line, that one transmission line that comes into Santa Barbara across the mountains. And there are some resiliency concerns in the town and we want to be a, like, offer a solution to that issue.
Okay, great. And then you mentioned that once completed, this would operate about 42% of the campus energy needs?
Yep.
And I was just wondering, why not more? I mean, could it be 100%? Or what are the limiting factors? Like why, why did we, you know, why are we looking at this? Is this just what's economically feasible with the design? Or what are the constraints?
Actually, we wanted to do a little more. So I think the original design a year ago was around 2 megawatts. So like, let's say 25% more. Once we did follow-up site visits, started working with a her biologist. And the biggest issue is just the trees and the growth, right? So there's a lot of shade that they create. And they're just like growing environmental, like, things, right? That don't allow us to place more solar. And then there are also concerns on the southern tip of the campus. There's the coastal commission concerns that, hey, how is it going to look like and so forth? So we basically maxed out on what we could do feasibly, just from a space perspective. And then again, like the PE building, I think that that would be an interesting addition as well.
And when you say looking at it from a space perspective, I think that was only looking at parking lots, right? That, that didn't include any analysis of rooftops, is that correct?
So we looked at rooftops as well. There were like, either the buildings were just not sufficient in size or like in area to offer, for it to make sense. Or the roofs just wouldn't structurally support solar. Or we're concerned around, hey, like what's going to, because there, there is also some community involvement, right? People might not like solar and rooftops and looking at it. So that's just like, all in aggregate pushed us towards just carports.
Okay, and are you, you'll be taking responsibility for maintaining the, the solar panels, right? And making sure they're clean? So like over time, they collect with dust, right? And then their, their efficiency goes down? So you, you would be the ones maintaining them in that way?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And the important thing is that again, there's a performance guarantee. So we're very much incentivized to make sure that they work well.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Trustee Stoddard.
Yeah, so over time, we're going to be remodeling or rebuilding more of our campus. And as we do that, I'm hoping that we would build structures that can support solar. So what would we be doing then at that point? Renegotiating our contract with you, is that how that works?
No, so this contract would be fixed. But then if there is more to do, we would probably just like do another contract, which would be similar in structure.
Thank you.
Trustee Bonametti.
So you mentioned that the panels are assembled in the US. Are the parts manufactured in the US as well or?
So there are the different depths that you could go to, right? I currently couldn't speak to where exactly the raw materials would come from. But like the standard that exists currently is this Build America by America Act. And we're not the ones manufacturing the panels, right? We're buying them. And we're doing everything in our, in our ability to ensure that they are compliant. And our suppliers are saying that they are compliant. So that's kind of the level of diligence that we, that we do.
Thank you.
Trustee Croninger.
Who has the risk of a major disaster, earthquake or storm or something like that?
Because we own the system, it is typically, you know, it's our insurance. We are carrying insurance for it. And if something were to happen, it's our responsibility and our insurance to replace it. There is a catastrophic clause in the contract, like a force majeure, that is pretty standard, pretty, pretty industry standard, that would give some relief in a truly catastrophic event. It would not be put on the school, but it would at least, the college, but it would at least remove us from some of our performance obligations while that, you know, event was mitigated and whatever. If we have to rebuild the system, it would provide for some relief to, to scale in that event under the force majeure.
No questions, no more questions? All right, well, we appreciate you all coming and we'll look forward to seeing you again as we go through the process.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we're going to item 8.1, approval of an amendment to the Agreement for Lead Sustainability Consulting Services for the Physical Science, Physical Education, I'm getting five years in the future, Physical Education Replacement Project. Do we have anything to report on this one or nothing additional? Okay, and I guess we can maybe take both items together. So the next one is a retroactive approval of a purchase order.
And if I can offer, the reason it's retroactive is that the PE folks intended to be able to use the same taping tables that they have in the PE building in the new fieldhouse where they're going to be doing athletic training things. But when they went to remove them from the walls in the PE building to move them to the new space, they fell apart. So they needed to be replaced and the lead time was four to six weeks. And so I had to approve it. So that's why this is a retroactive approval.
It makes sense. Do we have a motion to approve 8.1 and 8.2?
So moved.
Thank you, do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, any other discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Student Trustee Bonametti?
Yes.
Trustee Croninger?
Yes.
Trustee Morris?
Yes.
Trustee Gullitmore?
Yes.
Trustee Abuud?
Yes.
Trustee Black Mertz?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Stoddard?
Yes.
Hey, thanks. Next up is item 9.1, and we do have a public comment. Next up is item 9.1, and we do have a public comment on this one. So we'll take the public comment.
Good evening again, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Agenda item 9.1 lists for your approval the job description for a classified manager position for an Assistant Director of Student Equity and Basic Needs. The agenda specifies that this item is to correct a previous approval of an incorrect classification presented in June. I'm here to offer a few more details and background information that you might find might find helpful. At last month's board meeting, the board approved the job description for a new management position of Assistant Director of Student Equity and Engagement Programs. It was agenda item number 9.3. As there had been no consultation with faculty about this prior to that June board meeting, faculty only discovered serious issues with the content of this job description after it was approved by you. In the days following your June meeting, several faculty groups, including Omoja faculty, non-credit faculty, the FA, and the academic senate brought to the administration our concerns about various job duties specified for this position. These concerns centered around changes in faculty working conditions, academic freedom, and other academic and professional matters which would have required consultation with the senate. On July 14, we were then informed that inadvertently the wrong job description had been attached and approved at your last board meeting. The new and correct job description for an Assistant Director of Student Equity and Basic Needs is attached to 9.1 today. I want to confirm that there are no faculty concerns about this one. The reason I'm here today is that the previous incorrect job description, which has been raising those concerns about working conditions, academic freedom, et cetera, has a different title. And the FA feels that it needs to be crystal clear that today you are not only approving the new and correct job description for an Assistant Director of Student Equity and Basic Needs, but that this also means that the previously approved incorrect job description for an Assistant Director of Student Equity and Engagement Programs is rescinded, avoided. I am not an expert on Brown Act. So if you all feel that today's vote to approve the job description for an Assistant Director of Student Equity and Basic Needs at the same time means that your previous approval of the incorrect job description for the Assistant Director of Student Equity and Engagement Programs is automatically voided, then we will totally take your word for this. But I wanted to make sure to bring this up because the current agenda description is not clear on this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do believe with the words correction and incorrect that are in here, it is strongly suggested that the previous one doesn't stand and this one does. That's my interpretation.
And if I may add, the reason that that is also the case is the intention was never to have two different positions. It was always a single position that was unfortunately incorrectly put on the last agenda. So the, so it does void the previous approval because that never existed in the first place.
Thank you. It's on YouTube forever. Trustee Croninger.
Well, I was just going to move that we approve it with the addition that this does void the previous approval and there's only one position in mind. And that should make it clear because it's on the record.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second to approve this and verify that the previous action is void. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Student trustee Bonametti?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Abud?
Yes.
Trustee Croninger?
Yes.
Trustee Stoddard?
Yes.
Trustee Gillett Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Morris?
Yes.
Trustee Black Mertz?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is another one where like nothing is perfect in this world. And so I'm glad that, you know, the mistake was found, it was raised and got fixed within 30 days. So thank you to everybody who worked on that. Next up is reports from the board and committees. Any reports from the board? I have one on our retreat, but.
I have one as well.
Go ahead, trustee Gillett Moore.
Oh, thank you. So as you know, we have some board policies on the agenda. So I like the fact that we are moving along and keeping our policies up to date. As far as our, as you're one of your legislative liaisons, we all know, as I mentioned earlier, the big beautiful bill was signed. And with that being said, I just want folks to hear that we are definitely facing some challenging times that in addition to our California budget challenges as well as enrollment. We are, we are not back to where we were prior to the pandemic. And because of this big beautiful bill, which in fact doesn't impact, it does not impact the 2025, 2026 academic year. It will impact the 2026, 2027 academic year. However, because of a lot of the changes, there may be some impact to community colleges, particularly particularly related to access to financial aid for part-time students, affecting programming and graduating earnings. The bill also includes provisions that could impact access to SNAP and Medicaid, which many of our college, our community college students rely on. While the bill expands Pell Grant eligibility to include short-term accredited workforce programs, other provisions such as requiring a minimum of 15 credit hours per semester to receive a full Pell Grant could disproportionately affect our part-time working students who often attend community colleges. And this could lead to possible enrollment reductions more. And therefore, we just need to be cognizant, respectful, and remain professional as we strategically map our budget and be realistic that we will have to make some budget decisions that are very challenging. And I hope that we can all work together respectfully for the greater good of our institution and community moving forward. And some of these decisions may not be a decision that benefits everyone, but we will have to make decisions. And so I would be remiss if I didn't say that. I'm very concerned about was how we're going to be impacted from this big beautiful bill. To my understanding, we haven't been impacted yet as far as any federal funding that this institution received. Dr. Andrew Giannis, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't know what's to come next week, next year. So I am watching it closely. I literally listen to the news from sunup to sundown, multiple stations at a time, and attend several webinars, both for healthcare and higher education, just to stay abreast with all of the changes that's going on. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Richards?
Thank you. Well, as we all know, the many of our local governments, this county and city of Santa Barbara have been holding workshops and hearings on the immigration and customs enforcement activities that we are aware of in the community. I attended a city of Galena special meeting on Monday, which was on the same topic. And I just wanted to share that, you know, I spoke on my own behalf, you know, and supporting what they were doing. And I just think it's important, I want to encourage our, my colleagues and our and the college to make, you know, make sure that we're getting the word out that we're affected by this, that it's having a chilling effect on our students and our staff and faculty. People are scared about, you know, coming to class, you know, that we've had discussions about what to do if ICE comes to campus. And I think it's just important for us to try to get the word out as much as possible to the community about the impacts that this is having on us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, trustee.
I would add that they're now into rescinding naturalization, including even small details on an application, so forth and so on. So basically, looking for any excuse.
I'd like to have Vice President Corolla Smith come up and respond to one of trustee Gillett Moore's questions about whether or not we've been impacted because there has been some information. But what it really means, we're still waiting for the details. So, Vice President Smith?
Yes, good evening, everybody. We have received notification that our WEOWA funds will be or have been impounded. We knew from prior communications that the funding would be withdrawn for the 26, 27 fiscal year. But now we know that for this academic year, the funds are impounded currently. We will receive further notification on August 9. But it looks like this will be tied to a requirement that we verify immigration status for any federally funded programs such as WEOWA, which we currently don't do. So I think it's safe to assume that we will lose our WEOWA funding effective immediately. And that is about $200,000 for us. We are working with our team to figure out which activities we can maybe divert to other grants or district funding or what needs to be discontinued.
And if I can add, there was a comment in the superintendent of instructions email that said, of course, there are lawsuits and this is just going to become part of a lawsuit. So it's not that the state is willingly accepting this. It's just they're getting informed of impounds basically by the day.
Trustee Stoddard?
What program is being impacted?
This is the Workforce Innovation and I forgot.
Opportunities.
And Opportunities Act, yep. So this is a program that funds our ESL, non-credit ESL program and our adult high school and GED and bilingual GED program.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, and of course, you know, in that population, we currently do not check for any kind of citizenship status.
Yes.
Unfortunately, we should not discuss this topic anymore since it's not on our agenda. But if this is a topic we want to discuss more, we can do that at the August meeting. Trustee Gillett Moore.
I was just going to ask if she could share, thank you for that information. Do we know roughly how many students that is?
So we can work on sending out the information when we can gather it. Again, this is literally breaking news. So as soon as we have anything we can pass along, we will.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can we please put that on the August agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
A report on this grant being lost?
Yeah.
Or on the?
Well, just where we are with it and what we might be able to do to mitigate it because we can't lose our adult high school.
Yes, okay, it'll be on the August agenda. Any other board reports? Okay, well, my report is that we do have a retreat on August 18 set. So thank you, everybody. The retreat will be from 12 to 5. And the business part of the retreat will be from 12 to 5. And we'll have a lunch from 11 to 12 served. So like social lunch, non-business lunch.
And I sent out an updated calendar invite earlier today that now needs to be updated again because we got our wires crossed and I didn't understand that it was lunch from 11 to 12 and then business from 12 to 5. So be on the lookout for update.
And I sent the board the proposed retreat agenda. And so if you want to respond by tomorrow morning, the administration and the staff is going to be working on the content. So we want to give enough time. So if you have any suggestions at this point, let me know. But it's really focused on three areas, where we're at now, state of the college, our own review, and where we want to go next. And then how we want to improve ourselves as a board in terms of our meetings and our agendas and our communication and conduct. But yeah, that's our retreat and we're looking forward to it. It's in about a month here on campus. So we'll begin doing it, I believe, at the West Campus, but not a final room. Okay, the CPC room. Okay, and then after that, later in the week, I hope everybody, we see you at the all-campus kickoff. And we have a board meeting that day as well. So we'll have a busy week altogether. And one thing last I'll mention, the same day as a retreat, I will be attending a tour by our local Planned Parenthood for some elected officials that they invited to tour one of their health centers. So I'll report back on anything important I learned there. But they invited some of us and I'm going to join it that day. Next is item 10.2, BP 3501, Campus Security and Access. It's the first reading. Trustee Croninger?
I was not sure because I didn't think that the policy committee had had a chance to meet. Is this, have you guys considered this yet? Or is it going to be PAP first or what?
Think all of these are going to be PAP first?
Right, this is recommending it to go to BAP and we can have.
I think our committee will look at it after BAP.
Okay, because I had a suggestions, a couple of suggestions on this one and the next one, I think.
I think we can do the suggestions now. I think that's the intent is that we we have our intentions before the process starts.
Correct, we're we're following current policy, board policy about bringing all of these to you, to the full body first for consideration. And if you resolve and want to put forward suggestions to BAP, we can take it from there. If, on the other hand, you feel it requires more discussion, you can direct it to the policy committee.
Okay, I appreciate that. For 3501, Campus Security and Access, it seems like we're mixing apples and oranges the way this is written. The code, Federal Code of Regulations is about security. And the ACCJC accreditation standard is more about facilities, as far as I can tell. So it seems to me that we need the facility aspect to be somewhere else, basically. Unless, and I didn't see any indication in the ACCJC, they're talking about security as well. Because we're talking about the systems that provide for the security of the buildings, that kind of thing. Not, and and my second suggestion is that I'm not happy with the wording here because when you say the district provides safe and effective physical resources, particularly the safe part, there are no guarantees and we shouldn't be promising that. Look what happened to 911 this week. So we should be using language that says that we're, you know, conveys that we are endeavoring to do this or doing our best, make our best efforts or any of that sort of thing. But not that we promise that we can provide safety. There is no such thing.
Thank you. Trustee Gillett Moore, do you have a comment on this one?
Yes, so Dr. Magan, Maginal, you're absolutely correct. We all agree that all bills will come, board policies will come first to the collective. And then if they were substantive, we would either discuss it further or not. If we wanted to make changes like the edits you're recommending, trustee Croninger, then it's recommended to go to the committee. As for you not liking the words, what I'm noticing here and Dr. Maginal, let me know if I am reading this incorrectly. The the edited version is reflective of the legal updates number 44. So these are the exact words that they are recommending from the legal updates. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
The the problem here is that they have not done a good job on their wording. And sometimes we see that in the legal.
I wasn't done talking, trustee Croninger.
Let's, Gillett Moore, you can finish.
Thank you. So again, from sitting in these workshops since 2022, it's highly advised that we take this recommendations from the legal updates. However, I do hear what you're saying, that we can never guarantee safe and effective. But if these are what's being advised, I strongly suggest that we use that language. We can take it to the committee and have further discussion. And in addition to that, I will reach out for more clarification on the specificity of the words, the words that have been utilized here. But again, I've been to these workshops several times and they overemphasize the importance of using what is recommended to keep us out of any type of accreditation issues.
Any other comments on 3501? Okay, next we'll move to 5035, withholding of student records. Any comments on this one?
Yes.
Go ahead, trustee Croninger.
A comment here is just that with the revision, it seems like the remaining first paragraph sentence should go at the bottom. it seems like the remaining first paragraph sentence should go at the bottom.
Okay, sounds good. Next is BP 5040, Student Records Directory, Information and Privacy. Any comments on this one?
I have a.
Trustee Blackmertz?
And this may be, since this is a legal update, it may be something that we can't change. But at the bottom of page one, the district cannot require a current student to provide legal documentation to demonstrate a legal name or gender change in order to have the student's chosen name listed on the students. And it changes from diploma to records. And I, I mean, I understand it's a legal recommendation. We shouldn't really go against it. But I see this presenting issues in the future. As someone who's, you know, changed their last name a couple of times as a result of marriage, it's difficult to track down certain things when you forget who you were at that point and not having it tied to a legal name. I could see that just causing an issue for a student in the future. But that's, that's just my two cents on the matter.
Thank you. Trustee Croninger?
Since we keep coming back to this legal recommendation, the practicality of this is that we need to look at it ourselves. Sometimes people don't realize what they're doing when they write this language. And so if you promise a safe environment and you can't provide it, you run the risk of a per se negligence case. And people miss that, you know? They don't understand that we could be per se liable for what happens to somebody because we failed in that promise. So it is better to say, we do our best. That's all I'm saying. And we found a multitude of things that were legal recommendations when we went through the whole set in 2016 in about three years, where the legal recommendation was wrong for one reason or another. Sometimes they got the statute wrong. Sometimes they misworded it from the statute. It, you just have to look.
The next is.
Can I make it? I'm sorry, I just.
Go ahead.
Trustee Merz, Meritz, my apologies for messing up your name. So can you tell me, again, you had an issue with the sentence, just so that I can be prepared for our committee meeting?
Yeah, so it's the last sentence on page one, starting with the district cannot require a current student to provide legal documentation to demonstrate a legal name change or gender change. I think the part that really gets me is, of course, on the diploma, we should put what the student would be, you know, proud to display on the wall of their future office. But on all of the student records, to change a student's name without legal documentation of that name change, I just see it presenting administrative issues for those individuals down the road.
Okay.
Why, why do your, why, you know, I'm applying for a job? Why do the name on your records not reflect the legal name that you have right now? It just, it seems like it would lead to confusion.
Okay, thank you for that. And then also I'm noticing here that it looks like we may have been really overdue with updating this board policy because we have updates from update number 40, 42, and 44. And coming up, I believe, for next year, we will be on legal updates 47. So this document was overdue to be updated. But again, I will circle back to see why this type of language was utilized and how it protects us legally. So I can have that information for us at our next board policy meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one, 6250, any comments on that one? Budget management, something we, I think, care a lot about.
We do.
Hey, my last question, I think it just got answered, just a clarification. Some of these legal updates, they have like different dates and different colors, but we're only doing them now. It's just noting when the recommendation came out. Are, is that legal? Okay, cool. Thank you. Trustee Richard?
Yeah, I actually had a comment about the 6250 because one of the things that's being suggested for, to be struck and stricken was the minimum of two months or 16.7% of expenditures recommended for the reserve. And then if you refer to our reserve policy, we have 15%. So I guess I just wanted more information about that. Like, why is that being recommended to be removed? And is that not a current recommendation? And has there been a discussion about why we are 15% and not the recommended 16.7%?
Trustee Croninger can answer that.
Actually, it's 20%, 15% or the amount of your deferrals and then 5%, which refers to what's discussed here. We had extensive discussions about this early on and extensive shared governance. And these are the numbers that were, you know, ultimately presented to the board by the various constituencies of the college as what they wanted to see as reserves. We had no previous reserves policy before those discussions. And people were all over the map about what should it be, you know? Like, it should be enough to run the college for a year if we're not funded. Well, that seemed unrealistic. So.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Trustee Gulletmore, is that a?
Yes, yes, Trustee Richard. So to my understanding, it's highly recommended that there is verbiage stating that you have at least 5%. So that's why you have that there. Also, to my understanding is that our particular board used to be more conservative, which is why they had 15% or 20%. So that's where that came from. That's from the explanation that I received from former trustee Haslin Hucy, I sit in.
Thank you. Well, we'll send all these to the BPAP and we'll see them in 60 days. That's what the policy says, at least.
So for clarification, you don't want to send any of these to the Policy Committee?
Well, I don't know if we need to. I think all of these comments so far have been pretty minor, in my opinion. Does anybody feel differently that the Policy Committee needs to make more revisions before it goes to BPAP? Because they seem, because BPAP is going to make edits too, so.
I don't, I think that, I mean, you've had a couple of trustees here had a little bit of concern. And I believe it wouldn't be, it wouldn't hurt to just have them listed so we can just talk about it some more in detail. And then that also gives me opportunity to reach out to the two facilitators of our legal updates to get more understanding on the word semantics here to kind of give a little bit more context for trustee Meritz and trustee Croninger. I mean, this is the first reading.
Yes. No, I do understand that. And there'll be a second, first, and second reading in the future. It's just that I think a lot of these questions have been noted and BPAP can make those edits. But if you all want to spend that time this way, we can send them to the Policy Committee first. So I'm not on that committee. All right. So these will all go to the Policy Committee, then to BPAP, then 60 days later, back to the board for first and second reading for approval. Trustee Croninger?
I just wanted to point out again that my first comment on 3501 was that it seems like these are two very different subjects. So it's more complicated. I looked over our other policies. I didn't see a good home for facilities in general. So you may want to take up the idea of a facilities board policy.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Next is Reports and Information, 11.1, Receipt of the California School Employees Association, Chapter 289 Proposal for Bargaining. So it is received. Thank you. Next, does anybody have any questions to raise or question? Next is Disclosure of the District's Initial Collective Bargaining Proposal to the Faculty Association. First reading, does anybody have any questions on this one? All right, we'll go to the bargaining table with that. And then related, we'll receive the Faculty Association's contract proposal to get to negotiating. So any final questions on that? All right. Zooming through, we did 11.4 and then we'll go to 11.5, State Enacted Budget Information. Let's give us a summary.
Abu, trustees, Superintendent Jonas, thank you for this opportunity. This should be a very brief presentation. The enacted budget is very much like the May revise, but I wanted to point out some particular things that were slightly different and I apologize. I realized this morning I did not number the slides, so I will not. Next slide, please. That's our agenda or the topics, if we can go to the next slide. So this is a graphical representation of the 24, 25 in blue and 25, 26 in orange. And then I put the May revise numbers on the right so you can see how things changed. Essentially, the state budget overall is larger. The community college budget is also, total community college budget is larger. And you'll see in the future slide that a lot of that is one-time spending. And then the general funds are the same last year and this year, which is a slight improvement to what the May revise was proposing. Okay, next slide. So these are important changes that if impact us, one of them is the deferral amount has gone down. So rather than 5.3% in the May revise, it's 4.1%. So that will impact the payments that we receive in May and June of '26, which, as the way it's written currently, we'll get those payments in July of '26, which is the following year. The Public School System Stabilization Account, PSSA, there's a withdrawal system-wide, including K-12, of close to $500 million, which is about a third of what's left in that account. And then the way that transitional kindergarten is getting funded was changed. And the result of that is that some additional ongoing funding, $260 million, is coming to the community college system. So positive for us. All right, next slide, please. You'll see that the way they're calculating the Prop 98 guarantee, it has gone down. Property taxes are increasing 5% as an estimate, which sort of matches the trend that we saw when we got our bond presentation, that countywide, our property taxes were at about 5% increase per year over the last 20 years. But total reduction of 4% to the system and to the community college Prop 98 funding in general, which is unfortunate. Next slide. Okay, so these are ongoing adjustments. A lot of this is exactly like it was in the May revise, which is positive for us. COLA remaining at 2.3% for the SEFF calculation on a variety of what they call traditional categorical programs. Growth funding, which unfortunately won't impact us this year. And still no COLA for some of our biggest categorical programs, the student equity and achievement and strong workforce. That's been the trend over the last few years to not provide those programs with COLA, which unfortunately makes those programs a little more difficult to run. And the deficit factor backfill was removed for '25, '26 in the enacted budget. So it doesn't mean there will be a deficit. It just means that the backfill guarantee was removed from the proposal itself. Okay, if we can go to the next slide. Okay, so a lot of new funding between the May revise and the enacted budget. All of these are one-time funding. And on the next couple of slides, I put sort of the explanation of what they're supposed to pay for. But you can see that quite a variety of new funding, some of which I think is anticipating some of the reductions in funding from the federal government. There's a little note that the deficit factor backfill was removed, however, for last year. However, the Second Principal Apportionment, which is the report that comes out in June of the funding that we're receiving for '24, '25, had a 0% deficit factor. So they fixed it that way instead. This is the last year of the LGBTQ+ student support pilot funding. So it was a three-year pilot. And the legislature hasn't made an indication if they'll continue that funding in the future. But at this point, it's year three of a three-year pilot.
Your question?
Yes.
So in the top line, it says $60. Does that refer to $60 million?
Yes, $60 million. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I should have labeled the graph.
That's okay.
No, it's a good question. Yes. Any additional questions on this side? Okay, so the next slides are, just for your information, what things will be funded. You can see that student support block grants, they're worried about basic needs, some financial assistance for Dream Act students, Dreamer liaison support. This one's sort of interesting for us, the Healthy School Food Pathway, because in our environment, it's funding the career program to prepare school meals rather than funding the school meals itself. So that's sort of an interesting wrinkle for the community college system on that one. And then some additional, if we go to the next slide, some additional funding, some of these apply to us, some of these don't. Any questions on these? Okay, that completes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. We made out a little better than we hoped.
Oop, I'm sorry. I had questions about the attachment. That was the, isn't that here?
The joint analysis.
Yeah, the joint analysis.
Yes, those are produced by the Chancellor's Office in consultation with the League and with the ACBO and with A-triple-C-A.
Okay, so one question was that when they're talking on page, it doesn't show the page, new district funding floor takes effect.
That's correct.
They have a package.
Yes.
You described three levels of funding in your presentation previously.
Yes.
This one sounds like there's only two levels. Is that just the way they wrote it?
It's the way they wrote it. So when we get funded, and I can show you in a future meeting, the Exhibit C that shows the three options, we get either the calculated amount for the year, the prior year's calculation plus COLA, or what used to be called the guarantee is now called the floor. And so those are the three options for us. The big change is that the floor for this year is last year's funding and the floor won't increase in the future by any COLA amounts. Whereas the guarantee, which was what they used previously, used to increase by COLA.
Okay. There was a mention of the faculty part-time insurance coverage going up percentage-wise from, to 90%, I believe. I didn't fully understand that, but mostly I'm wondering if that had, they wanted to encourage more people to sign up.
Exactly.
But they didn't give any more money for it. So my sense of it was when we're making a claim for that money from the pot that is still the same size. Is that of any financial concern?
Not at the moment. In past year, they rolled out the program a couple of years ago and some districts were very excited about it and signed up. But year over year, they've been using, I'm going to say about 10% of the total available funding. So there's a lot of unclaimed money there. And I think it's really helpful for us that in our agreement with the FA that we'll be allowing those part-time faculty to make use of that and then claiming the available money since so much of it has gone unclaimed. I think a lot of districts were really nervous that it would all get used up. But when you look back at history, it didn't because a lot of districts either didn't negotiate it or were uncomfortable moving forward with that.
Okay, well, that's good because I do like the program. I like that we can do that. But on the other hand, I don't like surprises.
Agreed.
Money surprises.
Thank you. We're good. Thank you. Last two items, out of state travel, just one. And then large-scale events on campus, which looks like it's grown since last month, which is also good news. Lots of car shows. It's a good place to do them, I guess. Next is the Consent Agenda. Does anybody have anything to pull from Consent? It's 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. All right, let's do a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
We have a first, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you. And let's do a roll call vote, please, on Consent objectives.
Student trustee Bonamede?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Gulletmore?
Yes.
Trustee Blackmertz?
Yes.
Trustee Stoddard?
Yes.
Trustee Abu?
Yes.
Trustee Croninger?
Yes.
Trustee Morris?
Yes.
All right, I appreciate it, everybody. We got done at 7:10 on the open session and we're going to go back into closed session on Superintendent President Evaluation and we'll report out later. Thank you.